I'll go ahead and get started for this December 4th, correction, December 5th, 2012 Agenda, Oceanside City Council, Harbor District, CDC. And with that, can I get a roll call, Madam Clerk?
Mayor Wood.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Fowler.
Here.
Councilmember Sanchez.
Here.
Councilmember Kern.
Here.
Councilmember Faleen.
With that, I'll go to the City Attorney for a closed session.
Thank you. There'll be no meeting on Item 1. Item 2, council meeting to discuss potential litigation in the matter of one case. Item 2B, conference with legal counsel on the matters involving Dunex Incorporated versus the City of Oceanside. The two Superior Court case numbers are listed on page 2 of the agenda.
With that, we'll adjourn to closed session. Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. For some of you who haven't been here before, if you have a pager or a cellphone, could you put it on vibrate or silent? We'd appreciate that. Number 1. Number 2, we have council meetings split up in two parts, 4 o'clock, 5 o'clock. 5 o'clock generally has all the presentations, et cetera, and invocation and whatever. But right off the bat, generally, let me tell you, this is really pretty light tonight, so it'll have a kind of a thin one. I think it's because of the holiday seasons. With that, 4 o'clock, Madam Clerk, or Mr. Clerk, or both, thank you very much. I'd like to start off. And with a roll call, please.
Mayor Wood.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Fowler.
Here.
Councilmember Sanchez.
Here.
Councilmember Kern.
Here.
Councilmember Faleen.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. Consent calendar, I know it's long.
Yes, consent calendar items include Item 3.
Item just item 3.
And there are no requests.
Move approval.
So move, in a second.
A second for discussion.
Thank you, Prince. The other thing, is any public on this?
No.
Thank you very much. With that, I see no speaker lights, so please move.
Motion approved, 5-0.
Thank you very much. This is going to go really long, I can tell. Madam Clerk, I see no choice except probably come through council reports, and I'm going to have to dig down for mine.
Okay. Counsel report, Item 4, Mayor Wood.
Thank you very much. Pretty short, but I will say a few things. A wonderful swearing-in ceremony earlier today, about him this morning. I want to thank all those people that were here to support the candidates from the election. I do appreciate that Superior Court Judge Michael Kirkman was here to swear in some of us, and I appreciate that. I also was involved in a situation the other day that was pretty nice. Honored to participate in the 7-Eleven check presentation, Operation Homefront Village, on Tuesday. That was a $25,000 check given from the 7-Eleven to that end of the year. This is for housing and support for wounded military men and their family, for transition help, for housing, food, et cetera. And it's kind of a great organization here in Oceanside. So I want to thank them for their donation of $25,000 for the cause, and it really is a good cause in Oceanside. I also want to remind people that the number of Friday is December 7th, March Paul Harbor Day. I want to thank those veterans who are still with us, and for all they've done over the years. They call them the greatest generation, obviously, for a reason. But we had two of those veterans, Paul Harbor survivors here this morning, and after swearing in, and they did the pledge of allegiance. So I want to thank them for their activities. Other than that, that's all I have for right now. Thank you.
Item 5, Deputy Mayor Fowler.
Thank you. Well, Oceanside won the CIF championship against Poway the other night, but they are not going to a state bowl game, and I think that's really a crime, because they have had two out of the last three years go into state bowl games. They've proven that they belong there, and they had a great season. So my hat's off to Oceanside High School for winning their, I think, ninth out of the last 10 years, CIF championship in San Diego County. We have, we had the Brother Benos Auxiliary Luncheon at Sheraton Carlsbad on Saturday, and that was really well attended, awful lot of people there. And I think Councilmember Kern and Councilwoman Sanchez were both there, supporting Brother Benos. We had the library holiday luncheon just about two hours ago, and it's great to honor those volunteers for all they do. We have the menorah lighting coming up on the 12th, which is right outside the council offices, council chambers, on the patio down below. And then, on the 13th, Angels Depot is having their 1 millionth pound of food celebration, 5:30 to 7:30, at Angels Depot. So it's a great event. They are feeding the neediest of seniors in the community. Oceanside is the largest distribution center in their system, and so we are definitely benefiting from that. And the last thing is, my grandson, I mentioned it last week, the Silver Pigskin on KUSI on Friday nights, the PPR, which is Friday Night Football, Basketball, the sports events going on. Anyway, my grandson, Justin Williams, is a finalist for the Silver Pigskin Award, and we have till December 11th at 5 o'clock to vote on Facebook or wherever. You just have to go to KUSI to figure it out. But it's a great honor for him, and as well for me, as a grandfather, so. And that's it. Thanks.
Item 6, Councilmember Faleen.
Thank you. Yeah, I think everyone touched on everything already. The events I attended was the Christmas tree lighting at the Regal Theater. That's an event that gets better and better every year. Santa Claus shows up on the fire truck, and we had great representation from Camp Pendleton. And also, was happy to attend today's lunch for the library volunteers, and it's certainly volunteers in our city that make it a much better place to live, and I thank everyone who commits their time to volunteering for the library. And that's it. Thank you.
Item 7, Councilmember Kern.
Thank you, Holly. Yeah, I did attend the library volunteer luncheon, and the biggest applause of the day went to Gail Wales, who actually runs the book, for the Friends of Library, The Farmer's Market, and to sell books every Thursday morning. She averages about $700 to $800 a week selling books at Farmer's Market. She also has online sales that they sell through the Amazon Marketplace, and she probably averages $3,000 to $4,000 a month selling books online. All these books are donated by the public to the library, they sell them, and then they give all the money to the library. So they, I think last year it was like $60,000 to $70,000 that they donated back to the library, to do some of those things that the city cannot do. So, you know, it's a very important aspect of our community to have the volunteers that support our public places. Did they give, I know they made over $100,000. Chris, I don't know if they donated back. I know the year before, that all the furnishings for the library, the city paid for the renovations, but all the shelving, when Deborah Polat was here, that was paid for by the Friends. And so that was a significant amount of money that they did then. But it is very, very helpful to have those volunteers to help the library. Anybody who wants to volunteer, please contact the library and do it, because they're always looking for people to work in their stores, in the libraries, to sell books. And I could use some help sweeping books during the quarterly book sale, because I have to haul tables and books and things like that, because I get drafted. It's one of those duties that's assigned as a husband, to go and help with the book sale. And the other one's on a sad note, and I hope we all keep Diane Nygaard in our hopes and prayers. She is not doing really well. She is the wife of the chairman, CEO of our Chamber of Commerce. She's been battling cancer for the last two and a half years now, and I think aren't going well. So I just, hopefully, people remember her. You know, it's always tough to have a loved one sick on the holidays, and Diane is not doing too well. So hopefully, people remember her. That, thank you.
As a mate, Councilmember Sanchez.
Thank you. Thank you. I did attend the Brother Benos annual fundraiser, and there, we got to hear some of the many, many success stories of Brother Benos, and it was pretty heartening to listen to these stories of what they've been able, people have been able to do with just a little help. And that's what Brother Benos does, a little bit of help times 1,000. And so it was really, really a great event. Also, on Saturday, Jerry Harmon, who's a former mayor of Escondido, had his annual Christmas party. It's at his house in Oceanside. And he, Jerry tends to bring people together, artists, you know, all kinds of folks, who go out and get things done. And so it's really, it was really great to see people from Oceanside, from Escondido, from Vista, from, you know, just all over the North County. So that was pretty good. Later on that night, there was also the concert here at the Star of Steve Pultze and Bush Waller. Steve Pultze is actually a client of the attorney that I work with, who does copyright. And this was actually a fundraiser by Feed the Soul Foundation, and the proceeds all went to Canine Companions. It was a full house, pretty much standing room only. So Feed the Valley does a great job doing that. I also attended the OP, Oceanside Public Library Volunteer Lunch, and got the chance to thank volunteers, or many volunteers. We had just a few dozen today, but I know that there are so many that do so much for us. And that's why we're able to provide the level of service to our youth, to our kids, to our young adults, to our seniors, to everyone in Oceanside. This afternoon, I attended the graveside funeral of Eddie Leacy. Eddie was a wonderful man, did a lot for Oceanside, retired after 20 years, Marine Corps. And basically, he and his family have had businesses. He actually spent a lot of time with kids, and just also worked at NCTD. So he also retired from NCTD, as I believe he was a driver. And, you know, he just did so much. On behalf of the Samoan community, he was such a role model. When I met him, it was before I decided to run and got a chance to talk to him, and what people kept talking about was, he made you feel like part of his family. You know, everyone he met, you know, you then became family, and that's exactly what he did for me. He certainly gave me his ideas about, you know, what he thought Oceanside should be doing, its leaders. And it was just really, it was really, I felt blessed to have met him over 12 years ago, to continue to have such a great relationship with his family. And so that was today, at 2:30. And, you know, we had some members of the Samoan community there. He would have been 81 this coming, I believe, this coming month. So it was, it was a really nice event for him, as they say, for his coming home. So I would like, Mayor, for us to dedicate this meeting at the end to Eddie Leacy.
Thank you very much.
And coming up, we've got, besides the things that have been mentioned, we have this coming Sunday, December 9th, 2:00 p.m., the Senior Holiday Dance at El Corazon. There's also at 6:00 p.m., Native Flute Circle at San Luis Rey Bakery. Native Flute Circle, something that just started, I think, about three months ago, and it's just a wonderful, wonderful event. It's once a month. Please, if you have, if you're around Oceanside, stop on by the San Luis Rey Bakery that's behind the mission. 6 o'clock is when they start Native Flute Circle. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Not very much, and by the way, I'll introduce our new city clerk, Zach Beck. Zach, welcome. We had an introduction early and swearing in. Thank you. Congratulations on your position. With that, I'll adjourn this meeting for 5 o'clock. Can we get the reindeer to sit down up front? I'm sorry. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, welcome. I explained for the earlier group, we're very short agenda. Earlier, we're really short for time. We got about 45 minutes to kill before the 5 o'clock meeting. A couple of things, if I may. If you have a phone, cellphone, could you put it on vibrate or silent? We'd appreciate it, number 1. We're going to have an invocation and the pledge of allegiance. When we do that, stand until the end, and afterwards, you can sit right back down. We begin to have another short meeting, except we have several speakers tonight. I'd also like to introduce for our new group, our new city clerk, Zach Beck, who just got sworn in this morning. Zach, welcome to the ward. Another one, could I have all the students that are here from Rancho Buena Vista stand up? Ah, they're here for, here for class! Ah, thank you very much. With the economy, with the way it is, I tell them only $5 is charged to stay here tonight. Oh, well, anyhow. And also, we have some lovely people here from Phil Lam of Filipino American Society. Stand up, please. Ah, thank you very much, and I appreciate it. With that, Valerie, could we please?
Yes, at this time, if you would please stand for the invocation and the pledge of allegiance. And tonight with us leading the invocation is Reverend Malaki Teo Ilili from the Oceanside Samoan Congregational Church of Mesa Margarita.
Almighty God, the ruler of the heavens and of the earth, we beseech thee to bless thy people of the city of Oceanside. Keep them at peace during this holiday season. We pray for safety. We pray for protection. We pray for your love for thy people during this Christmas season. Cause justice and charity to flourish amongst our leaders and the fine people of this city. Bless abundantly our mayor, our councilmen, our councilwomen of this city. Inspire our leaders to continue their great work within this community, and to carry out the dying divine will amongst its people. Grant our leaders the courage and the strength to lead this city, and to come to a peaceful resolution topics and subjects that are discussed within these chambers. We pray for our armed forces, our men and women who served in the military. Bless them and their families during this holiday season. Let them know that wherever they may be around the world, whether at home or in a bunker in the Middle East, let our troops know that you are with them till the end of their days. We pray these things, along with the silent prayers of those who are in attendance here this evening, in the name of the Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit. Amen.
Leading us this evening in the pledge of allegiance are members of the San Diego Humane Society North Campus, Allison Sabino, Athena Davis, and Donna Pasquale.
All right, please place your right hand over your heart, and begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, we're going to go directly into our pet of the month, and I'll have all of them introduce themselves.
Okay. My name is Breann Miller, and I'm our community program specialist at our North Campus.
And I'm Allison Sabino, I'm the adoption supervisor at the North Campus, and I have Pistachio with me. She's two years old, and she's available for adoption.
I'm Donna De Pasquale, I'm an adoption counselor, and I have Willie, who is six years old.
Hi, I'm Athena Davis, and I'm our happy coordinator. And I have Panera, who is four years old, and she is available for adoption.
All of these wonderful animals, like they said, are available for adoption. All of them are either spayed or neutered, microchipped, current on all their vaccinations, and they come with their licensing, as well as a free vet check. So if you, or if you know somebody looking for their next furry friend, come on down to the Humane Society. We also just started our new span neuter initiative with low-cost, no-cost span neuters available throughout San Diego County. For more information, you can visit our website for that. And we also have a mobile vaccine and licensing clinic coming up on the 22nd, happening from 10 to 12 at the Eastside Park Recreation Center. You can bring out your animals and get low-cost vaccines done, and your licensing, all in one stop, and all done by our vet staff. So, hope everybody has a happy holiday season. Oh, can't forget. And if you haven't visited yet, please come down to our dog park, our American attest to how much fun it can be. It's definitely all new renovated, and it's lots of fun. We have areas for our larger dogs, as well as the smaller dogs, too, so don't think that the smaller ones will get overwhelmed. Thank you.
Before I do something else, I want to say, the dog park is a social gathering. It looks like a little herd of little animals, split between large dogs and small dogs, like this. They're wonderful, I enjoy it down there, it's great. And they have a new facility for cats, rabbits, and other animals. Yes, and it's really nice, and if you go by there, great selections, et cetera. We'll take a picture, but first, three dogs are here today, and I think we could use a mascot for the Oceanside Charitable Foundation. Uh-huh, one of them. And mascot for the Republican Party, North County here, that'd be a mascot. Phil Lam, or Rancho Buena Vista for a mascot, in case you're here as they're leaving, you can go ahead and get one of these dogs and take care of it for your group. Anyhow, thank you. I'd like to get a photo with Valerie. And thank you. And ladies and gentlemen, please, at Christmas time, what a great gift, a nice animal, people deserving and needing. Thank you all. Let's hear for them, ladies and gentlemen, thank you.
For our next presentation, we have the fifth anniversary of the Oceanside Charitable Foundation, and we'd like to call forward the following individuals for this honor. We're going to start with Beth Holt, who's the chair of OCF. We have board members, Diane Nygard, John Todd, Bob Gleisberg, Colleen O'Hara, Jennifer Bloodso-Lacey, John Duca with the San Diego Charitable Foundation, and his staff are here tonight. And other individuals in support of the Oceanside Charitable Foundation include Chuck Lowry, Nadine Scott, Bill Fisher, Caroline Salvatore, and Blake Kern.
Wow, what a lovely group. I'll pass the mic in a second, though. Ladies and gentlemen, they had a special on KUSI just a while back, we all were involved with it. For how much this group gets money for charitable organizations in Oceanside, you can't do it by yourself. It's a team effort, getting everybody involved to help. They've done that, and they've been wonderful. And there was a great coverage on this from KUSI the other day. Even I was part of it, and it was a little nippy out there that morning, but ladies and gentlemen, I want to thank these people individually. They keep coming back and doing things for the community, and special people that are in need. And from me to you, thank you very much, and I'll pass the mic to whoever's going to get it after we read this. Please, Valerie.
Proclamation in honor of the Oceanside Charitable Foundation, fifth anniversary. The Oceanside Charitable Foundation is a community-based foundation of, by, and for the benefit of Oceanside residents. And whereas the mission of the Oceanside Charitable Foundation is to advance philanthropy throughout the city of Oceanside, and whereas half of all funds donated to the OCF annually are used to build an endowment to benefit the residents of the city now and forever, and whereas half of all funds donated to OCF annually are granted back to the community each year, and whereas the Oceanside Charitable Foundation is celebrating its fifth anniversary, having granted $167,250 to benefit Oceanside's current and future residents. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Jim Wood, mayor of the city of Oceanside, do hereby declare December 10th through 17th as Oceanside Charitable Foundation Week in our community, and encourage all residents to get involved and make a difference in the welfare and well-being of our fellow citizens.
Okay. Thank you very much. Oceanside Charitable Foundation has been in existence a little over four years. We've given out money for four years in a row, $167,250. This is the beginning of our fifth year. As our membership grows, our funds grow, and everything we contribute goes back into the community, to nonprofit organizations, to help the citizens of Oceanside. So anybody has any questions, we would entertain that. We also have a website, www.oceansidecharitablefoundation.org. Very good. Thank you very much. Oh, we could definitely use more members. Thank you.
Pass this mic down. I'd like you gentlemen and ladies to identify yourselves, because it's nice to put a face with somebody who's out in the community doing a lot. So your manager, if you want to tell them where you're from or what you're doing, that's part of it.
My name is Bill Fisher, and this is actually a caroling group.
I'm Diane Nygard. Beverly Holtz.
John Todd.
Bob Gleisberg.
Jennifer Lacey.
Chuck Lowry.
Colleen O'Hara.
Nadine Scott.
George Brown.
Carolyn Salvatore.
Blake Kern.
Carolyn Brown.
We gotta get a little tighter here.
All right, on the count of three. One, two, three. One, two, three. Great, one more. Okay, one, two, three. Great, thank you.
Let's hear it from them, they give a lot of time and money to the city, thank you Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, appreciate the time we spend doing these presentations, the wonderful people in the community that give a lot, so we have a good opportunity to thank them, and that's what it's all about. Could I have a close session report from our City Attorney?
Thank you, there was no close session meeting on Item 1. Item 2, the Council did need to discuss a potential litigation in the matter of one case, and there's no action to report under the Brown Act. Item 2B, Conference of Legal Counsel, the Council meant to discuss existing litigation in the matter of Dunex Inc. versus Cavalier, I'm sorry, Dunex Inc.'s Cavalier Mobile Estates versus City of Oceanside, case numbers 37, 210, 61, 745, and 212, 55, 503. That was an informational briefing, there's no action to report at this time.
Thank you, sir, appreciate it. Madam and Mr. Clerk, excuse me, it's kind of tough here, could we have a public communication, item 10, please?
Under public communication, they have three speakers. You may come to both podiums, you have three minutes to speak. Sharon Sheef, sorry if I mispronounced that, Christopher Wilson, and Larry Berry.
Good evening.
Hi.
You've got three minutes, if you have to adjust the mic where you feel comfortable, that's good, thank you.
Okay, never done this before.
Sure you'll be well.
I just had a question. First of all, I have a statement, I love Oceanside, I've been here about six years, absolutely love it. I grew up on Newport Beach in the 40s and 50s, and it reminds me of Newport then. It's just, really has a sweet spirit about it, it's open and friendly, and not too crowded and snooty, and I just want to say I really love it. I do have a question about the exit, the I-5 exit going south off of Mission going east. I keep complaining to my husband, I thought, well, since I'm here, I'll complain to you, because he can't do anything about it. I don't know why it's always such a big mess. You know, like, palm things all over and trash, and it never seems to get cleaned up, and I don't know whose responsibility it is.
If it's an off-ramp, or on-ramp, or freeway, it's Caltrans, not the City of Oceanside, that's their problem. We don't regulate it, it's Caltrans, State of California, if it's a ramp. So, you'd have to have a complaint to Caltrans, or we can call also and try to say, we have a complaint from our citizens regarding something, and we can do that. If you have an exact location, see that lovely lady in the back there in the little booth? That's her Deputy City Manager, the lady waving? Give it to her, and she'll try to get it to Caltrans.
Can people adopt an off-ramp?
Yes, you can, through the State of California Highway South, they do adopt, but it costs money and time, and you get a sign. But yes, ma'am, that's kind of interesting, yes.
Yeah, it's, I mean, it's a dangerous spot to be working, but my husband and I could clean it up probably in two hours or an hour. So, okay, that's it.
That's fine, thank you, and I appreciate that information.
Thank you.
Have a good one.
Mr. Mayor, City Council, Chris Wilson, 770 Harbor Cliff Way. I just wanted to take a couple of minutes to invite everybody here and people at home, if you're watching, to participate in the Friends of the Library's annual holiday home tour, which is this coming Sunday. It's going to be featuring four homes here in Oceanside that are all decorated for the holidays, two of which are kind of unique little properties in the Roberts Cottages down on the Strand, right next to the beach. In addition to that, there's also going to be a gift boutique expo and silent auction that will be held here at Pacific Center Library in the community rooms. Tickets for the tour are $20 and can be purchased by contacting the library. Thank you.
My name's Larry Berry, living on 3973 Brown Street in City of Oceanside, and coming up, an issue that, I guess I'm working through it and stuff, it's, they're dealing with mental illness, and we've had this in our city, we've got a lot of publicity in the last couple of weeks of certain issues that happen here on Dittmar, but I've also had it in my neighborhood over the last, just in the last week, where a 28-year-old woman who has mental illness, mental illness problems attacked another woman, and, you know, threatened to do bodily harm to her, a 22-year-old, and she had a 16-month-old child. She also, you know, threatened to kill her, to do stuff, and key her car, and break windows. And when we called the police, you know, they did absolutely nothing. They came in, they went to their girl's house, the woman's house, she didn't answer the door. If she doesn't answer the door, the police just turn around and walk away. I'd like to get some kind of, maybe a workshop or something on how we can address some of these issues when we see these things. And I know there's, you know, it's a free country, and you can be crazy if you want, it's one of the privileges we have in our community here. But it seems more and more people that we have now, I see, of more, you know, whether it's schizophrenia, whether it's, you know, alcohol and drugs or something. I'd like to see, I've come up with an idea, maybe possibly, everybody has now cameras on their phones and stuff, if we can videotape it and then take it to the police, and if they could kind of maybe work it into somewhere where they can keep this, keep that information, so we can keep track of these people. Because if I see something, what I find out is, this isn't the first time she went nuts, and I had to pull away from this woman as she was, you know, going after her. But, you know, at least there are issues, it's getting more and more in our society right now, and the police aren't, I don't know if they're not qualified to do it, you know, and they don't want to do it, and they've got other things to deal with it, but if there's some way that maybe the city and the police, and we could do something to, we've got a restraining order on this woman, but restraining orders are just a piece of paper, they're not going to, they're not going to stop somebody if she goes after him with a knife or something. So, I just, I don't know if the city, we can handle this, we get a lot of bad publicity from this stuff, and it seems we're getting more and more people, you know, because of low-income housing in Oceanside, we're getting more and more of these people here. So I think, as a community, we can do something with that, and we could address it in a, in a way that we could either isolate the people or do something to follow up on them. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
That's all the speakers.
Thank you. Please explain number 11 to the public, please, in case they're here.
Public hearing, item number 11 on your agenda will not be heard this evening, it may be re-noticed at a future date, but at this point, it is not going to be heard.
Thank you, Bridge. Madam and Mr. Clerk, please, item 12.
Item 12 is introduction of an ordinance amending Chapter 2, Section 2.1.64G of the City Code modifying the appointment process for regional boards and commissions, and at this point, we have 12 speakers.
Thank you very much. Public, please.
Again, please line up when your name is called at both podiums, you have three minutes. Jimmy Knott, Sandra Waker, Chris Wilson, Larry Berry, Barbara Haslett.
Mayor, Councilmembers, Juneau 127, Sherri Lane. First off, I would like to take and ask you to take and consider this. Is that the mayor does have certain powers, which is why I just passed out to you. Plus also, according to California Attorney General Lundgren, back a while back, is that the mayor's appointment power is based upon the powers of the state statutes, not city ordinances, and they're specifically limited by a city charter, state law, or the courts. That's very simple. There are a few other little modifications there, which I listed to be open and honest about it. And what we're talking about with the public right now is basically Policy Number 100-10. And I have basically took the arrows, and you can take and see what we are talking about there, with the appointments by the mayor. And this is where some of the issues are coming about. The issue also comes about with the state government, 4601, 4605, and it says applies with general law cities. However, if you look at the California State Constitution, Article 11, it says, "It shall be competent in any city charter to provide that the city governed thereunder may take and enforce all ordinances and regulations in respect to municipal affairs, subject only to restrictions and limitations provided in their several charters, and in respect to other matters, they shall be subject to general laws." That's what our state constitution says. So we are limited by the state constitution. We also take and look at it in the same chapter, it says, "It shall be competent in all city charters to provide, in addition to those provisions allowable by this constitution and by the laws of State California," and list it down, basically for the regulation and the government operations. What we're also talking about is our city charter. There is nothing in our city charter that delineates any purpose for the mayor, or any, you know, for even the council just mentions that. So what we need to do is that this has to go to a city charter issue. It is out of your hands. This is by state law, by our own charter, and what the courts have said in the past. If you take and you go through, the City Attorney, can they basically illuminate that and clarify that? Those are the laws.
Good evening, I had afternoon down, but I guess we're in the evening now, so I have, Mr. Mayor and City Councilmembers, I've never spoken here before. My name is Sandra Waker, I live at 2275 Oceanview Road in Oceanside. I am a long-term time Oceanside resident, my husband is a retired veteran, Navy captain, and we have raised five children in the City of Oceanside, in fact, my stepdaughter graduated with Mr. Beck, Laura. So, we've been here a long time. I am here tonight to support modifying the regional appointment process. I know you were all sworn in this morning, and I congratulate all of you for your reelection, but I've come and watched the City Council meetings, I've never spoken, and it almost seems like it's a popularity contest, but the truth is, it's, you're here to do what's best for Oceanside, and the appointment process has not taken a good turn for Oceanside, it has not been, it has not been done in a manner that brings funding and support to Oceanside. I believe, and I should have read this, because one of the things that I think has been good for Oceanside for the last two years was the fact that we became a charter city, and one of the reasons we can make this amendment is because we now are a charter city. We need to modify the appointment process because we have not had the representation that Oceanside deserves under the current appointment process. We need people on these boards that are ready to work hard and fight for the best interests of Oceanside. I'm in total support of modifying the regional appointment process, and so is everyone out here in the audience who is wearing a yellow badge. And that's really all I have to say, other than congratulations, Mr. Feller, on the reelection.
Mr. Mayor, Members of the Council, Chris Wilson, 770 Harbor Cliff Way. I guess what I want to say more than anything here is, look before you leave. The ordinance that we're proposing here has obviously been drafted, it's now, today, you're going to vote on it. And this is your chance to sort of look at it and think, do we really want to do this? I think in the case of the people that are sitting up there at the dais, if the shoe was on the other foot, if we were instead looking at a council majority that consisted of Councilmember Sanchez, Mr. Wood, and say Dana Corso, for example, this ordinance would not be being brought forward. And to change the powers of an office simply because of the outcome of an election when majorities change, they've been known to do that, and I'm sure they will in the future, and to do so cavalierly is extremely short-sighted. Also, the outstanding legal issues which were presented by Mr. Knott, I think, have the potential to mire the city and this ordinance in a legal battle which could last how long and cost potentially millions of taxpayer dollars, just sorting out what this council has the power to do. I think to do so is a colossal waste of taxpayer money, and so I encourage you to consider that before voting on this ordinance. Thank you.
My name's Larry Berry, living on 3973 Brown Street. In the words of that great philosopher Rodney King, can't we all just get along? Yeah, this is one of those deals where we should be working together. I think changing the appointments is a good thing, I'm all for this, the appointment process, the regional boards and commissions. I think a change is good, I think it's something that different places in there may be a little more aggressive in, into the needs of the city, in different perspectives, so I am full support of it, and I think that its time has come for, you know, there's a lot of dollars out there, and we're not getting our piece of the pie, and that's what I think my biggest concern is, that we're not getting the money that, you know, we put into this thing, and so, and we're all for the betterment of the city. Some of us think the City of Oceanside should stay a little quaint, and, you know, the same way it was 40 years ago, a lot of us are saying, we got, we need to, you know, modernize and get competitive with our other cities that are, that are building and structuring. And again, we need to increase our, you know, our tax revenue, tax rolls, so that we can pay for police and fire. So I am all for this, I think it'll be good, I hope it just doesn't end up in a legal battle, and as usual, Oceanside is where politics mayhem is the rule instead of the exception. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Wood, Councilman Fellain, Feller, Kern, and Councilwoman Esther Sanchez, congratulations on your being installed this morning. I'm Barbara Flee and Hazlett, and I live at 4540 Cordova Way in Oceanside. I have been reading the articles in the UT North County Times regarding the discussion on appointments by the mayor to regional boards, and although Mayor Woods was reelected, he does not represent me and many of my associates. Mayor Woods has had eight years to represent Oceanside on Sunday, and I do not believe that he has worked hard enough to bring funds to Oceanside to improve our roads and our intersections. It's my belief that the mayor, that Mayor Wood and Councilwoman Sanchez are more interested in their own special interest groups, like Jeffrey Ranch, or mobile home residents, and the unions, and I support amending Chapter 2, Section 2.1.4 of the Oceanside City Code modifying the appointment process for regional boards and commissions. Thank you very much. The next five speakers. Jamel Scott, Chuck Lowry, Max Disposti, Susan Coker, Nadine Scott.
Hello, I've never done this before either, so pardon my nerves, but everything they said, plus, I would like to, in support of all the statutes and the constitution that everyone is quoting to you, I can support it on a more practical level, where I am a laid-off person, living in the City of Oceanside, my address is 1910 Maxon Street, and I've been searching for a job for weeks. And I've been searching for a job for weeks and weeks and weeks, hours at a time, online, and the closest job I can find to the city is Closeback or Vista. So I really would appreciate being represented by someone who cares about the citizens of the city, not just special interest, but that cares that the money's coming into the city. Another example is that I work for an organization collecting donations for fundraisers, and I go up and down the streets of Oceanside, and I will tell you, five out of five of the businesses that I walk into say, we're flailing. So that, to me, is a sad state of affairs, when they can't afford to give away a t-shirt as a donation because they're so concerned about the business going under. So I'm sure, I will be grateful as a citizen. I know that I really don't have a lot of stock in the federal government or the government and White House, but I would like to be able to have some faith in my own city government to know that you're looking out for your own, that you're looking out for the citizens of the city and not our neighbors. Yes, do we help them and support them? Great. But do you fund them before you worry about the situations and the people in your own city? It doesn't make any sense to me. So while you're, you know, supporting them economically, you know, and then you've got, you know, five out of five, right in front of you here, right in front of you, every one of those businesses are just wondering if they're going to make it through to the end of the year. So really, take into account the cities that reside in this city and look out for your own thirst. Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Chuck Lowery. I live at 812 Alberta. I have statements from 15 different voters, none of whom I've ever seen at council meetings, and they're all individual statements. I'm just going to roll right through these. I don't like the confrontational manner Kern, Feller, and Feller take against the mayor. It's happened consistently during their tenure, and I'm sick of it. I voted for Mayor Jim Wood to have his appointment authority. He's for the people. Kern, Feller, and Feller are not. The council majority must not steal the appointment powers that rightfully belong to the mayor. This exposes Oceanside taxpayers to the whims of council blocks and their unpopular, ill-conceived projects. This also ignores the majority will of the voters and exposes Oceanside to loss of tenure on Sandag. There's nothing more annoying than a city council more worried about political warfare than fixing our city. In my neighborhood, we have delinquent kids hanging out on street corners, adults lighting up joints in front of families at parks, and businesses dumping illegal waste in the streets. Don't you have something better to do? We voted for Mayor Wood to do his job and not have other council members continue to try to call the shots. The city council majority is backed by billionaire Doug Manchester, his two newspapers, and the owners of mobile home parks who want to rob elderly residents of their life savings. I'm tired of the power play by Kern, Feller, and Feller. They're acting like children who didn't get their way. The mayor was reelected by a substantial majority because we like him and the way Oceanside has developed. I want to keep appointment power as it is now because I voted for our mayor and because I do not trust the intentions of the council in stripping his powers. I support Mayor Wood and want him on Sandag. Feller, Feller, and Kern are violating the will of the people. We voted for Wood, and I object to this power grab. I'm outraged that members of the city council would attempt to eviscerate one of only two powers that are part of the mayor's office, and so soon after an election where one of those council members was soundly defeated by the mayor. It's shameful and contemptible. We, the citizens of Oceanside, have not asked for the council to change the duties of our duly-elected mayor. We do not give the council the support to change our will. The mayor should not have his previously existing powers removed just because somebody doesn't like him. We voted to elect Mayor Wood to govern as mayor, which included authority to make appointments. Removing that authority clearly undermines the will of the people. Mayor Wood represents the entire city, not the billionaire developers who own Feller, Feller, and Kern. They hate our mayor and are in a battle to prove their power. My closing comment. I ask you to call or email the city council majority and ask them to seek professional psychological counseling right away. Thank you.
I'm in casual Wednesday afternoon. Okay, my name is Max Disposti. I live in 616 South Nevada Street, Oceanside. I am a resident and a former commissioner of the city of Oceanside. Done a lot of volunteer work. I'm also a board member for the Main Street Oceanside, so I represent some businesses and the director of a nonprofit organization. Briefly, I would love to say that this is a laughing matter, but unfortunately it's not because a lot of us stake. And I was really impressed when I found out about the intent of city council to approve this change about the appointments rights of the mayor. And the other day, I approached Councilmember Gary Feller about this, and I really wanted to know more because I said, okay, there must be a reason here why we're doing this. We elected a mayor with the same powers, and now with all the priorities we have in the city, with the businesses that are going down, with a lot of things are happening, this is also happening. So we're trying to concentrate to create another decision within the city councils to take away some of the appointments rights that usually belong to any mayor's, or unless that we approve the mayor's to go ahead with, because a lot of us have voted for him, some didn't, which that's the democracy, that's the wonderful thing that we have. But at the same time, it was voted in to do so. When I talked to Councilmember Feller, he specified to me the reason why this needed to be done. And he said, Max, we cannot allow the mayor to appoint himself and extend that community organization so they can actually not approve the projects that we are for. That was as simple as that. So I understand the personal opinion stakes on this, but I think that changing the willing of the majority of voters, they actually elected mayor to appoint and do what he's doing within different commissions within the city of Oceanside, I think that's what we are asked to do. So I don't think the majority council, as majority as it is, has the right to take away those rights, strip away those rights, just to move forward with a personal agenda. I really dislike that. It doesn't mean that I voted for the mayor or not. It doesn't matter. It's about fairness and making sure that we do politics in a clear way. So I don't like the division as well. Second thing, I created a petition today, not because this, you know, seniority means nothing, there are a few hundred people that just signed that, because they were really disturbed by the decision of the city council making a move forward towards that disappointment. And you might not consider that. I'll leave it up to you, of course, but I hope you consider also the other views that are expressed within the city of Oceanside as well. Thank you so much for your time, and thank you.
Hi, my name is Suzie Coker. I live at 2126 Serrano Drive, and I am opposed to modifying the appointment process. The democratic process has spoken. Our mayor has more than successfully proven his remarkable ability to run this city. He won by a huge margin. We chose, we, the voters, chose, and you are elected leaders should listen. The voters spoke, and when we, as a people, speak, as a majority, our judgment should be respected. You are supposed to be role models. What are you doing? What you are proposing is obviously punitive, and it's disgraceful. Why can't the business of this city be done through cooperation and respect? I don't care if you're Republican or Democrat, it's a dividing factor. Shouldn't this city be run by the will of the voters and not by political party shenanigans? We chose Mayor Wood. We chose Mayor Wood with commissions and the boards that are in place. And to change it now after the election strips the voters of their will. We voted you in. We want you to lead this city, and the majority spoke. So I would really like that to be considered by all of you. Thank you.
Congratulations to everyone who got elected and sworn in this morning. I have done this before, as you know. I live in Oceanside. My name is Nadine Scott. I'm also an attorney. And I was very fascinated by Jimmy Knott's argument. Some was good, some wasn't good, but I believe unless the city charter reserved powers to council that are greater than what the mayor has, that this is going to require a charter amendment. It's obvious why you're doing it. You're not happy that Sandag did not jump ahead with projects in Oceanside, but if one would look at the geography, we're at the end of the pipe for everything. Jim has built a good reputation on Sandag. He's a senior member. There is a seniority factor on Sandag. I've written you all emails on that. I think it really, it stinks of sour grapes, and I really had hoped we'd come more together after the election, and the dust settled, and we know who's sitting up here. Even Mrs. Whacker had it right from the Republican Party. She said, we must amend the charter to change this power to the council majority. And she's right on. She didn't even know what she was saying. She was agreeing with Jimmy Knott and myself. And I'm surprised the city attorney doesn't agree with this. I mean, you're very talented, you're very able to read legislation, and if the powers were not reserved for the council majority, I believe we're stuck with general law, and we're going to have to disagree on that. But I do support Mayor Wood in pursuing an opinion by the Attorney General at the very least. Thank you. Good evening. The last two speakers are Charles McVay and Diana Sunday.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilmembers. I've heard about this meeting, so I rushed down here. I got to put my little piece in. I am appalled that Mr. Feller, that you would make this motion in the first place. Why not accept what the people voted for? You want them to accept you, and so do the rest of you. Councilman Feller, I'm surprised that you would have the gall to call a meeting for such as this. It is thus not necessary. I don't have a speech made, so I'm just speaking from what I think. All of you are elected to help the people. Mayor Woods has done an outstanding job, especially with who he has to work with. The three of you who have done everything you can to downgrade him and to feed your own egotistical agenda, whatever it happens to be, and I suspect for two of you, it is a higher office. And I'm not going to sit up here and talk a lot about everything. We all know this is wrong, and I wish you would stop it and listen to the people. We voted Mayor Wood in. He stands for the people. What makes either one of you three think you can work harder than he does at Sandag? He knows more about it than you three do. He's been in there longer. Sometimes you have to give and take. I have participated in hundreds of negotiations. I was a labor union representative, chairman of all general and local chairmen of the United States and Canada on transportation properties, represented by UTU. I know what negotiations, when you're talking about this stuff, you have to give and take. If you see you're not going to give something, you don't want to make an enemy, you put it back, you put it on the back burner and save it for another day. You want their help also. Having said that, I really believe the three of you, this is my opinion, and I'm going to quote something from Jack London, our old great author, but your actions, it's justifiable in my opinion, quoting, say, Jack London, "When men walk, when you walk down the streets, men will turn their backs on you. Angels in heaven will weep, and God forbid Lucifer, the devil himself, will shut the gates of hell to keep you out." Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Wood and Councilmembers. My name's Diana Sunday. I'm the Welcome Committee Coordinator for the Eastside Neighborhood Association. I had a speech, but there's some other things I'd like to say. I'm also appalled at the change of position for appointment for mayor. I think he spent many years building relationship, building seniority, and I'm curious as to what you're going to tell us, citizens of Oceanside, when you fail and you have not brought home the money. And for those in the Oceanside area that are looking through rose-colored glasses and do not understand, a vote of five against a vote of 50, I feel sorry for them because five votes will not get what 50 votes will get. And I do want to say, I'm more appalled this week than I was last week, but I want to remind you, the eyes of Oceanside are on you. The ball is in your court, and I hope you serve well. That's all the speakers. Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate that. Councilwoman Feller.
Thank you, Mayor. I certainly plan to vote for this and hope I have the support of my colleagues. As we discussed last time when we were instructing the city attorney to draft this ordinance, I think it's important for several reasons. And the starting point is that, you know, the system as it exists works fine when the mayor's part of a majority, because it doesn't matter who actually makes the first serve as far as beginning the discussion of appointments to regional boards and commissions. The system breaks down when the mayor's part of a minority. And so I think the system needs to be modified, as I recommended in my motion at the last meeting. And the reason is it's different when the mayor's appointing third-party people to be at different commissions. But when you're appointing council members to represent the city at different boards and commissions, I think the council as a whole has, you know, should be the appointing power because the representatives are representing the city council at those bodies. And so I think the mayor's powers need to be modified in this particular instance. And I think this ordinance will help out. Obviously, before I considered submitting it, I took a stroll and spoke with the city attorney to find out his opinion on how impacted, you know, whether or not the election of a separate mayor restricted our ability to make this item move forward, whether the city charter did, whether state laws did, and his opinion has that it did not, that we did have the right to move forward with this, and I think we should. And I would certainly welcome the city attorney to address some of the comments that were made as far as the application of the state constitution, the application of the city charter, because obviously there's no point in moving forward with something that's a legally questionable idea. But I know, according to the advice we've gotten, which is why we pay for a good city attorney, that we're on solid ground here. So I would be interested in the city attorney commenting on some of the comments the public had made.
Well, it's my opinion that the determination of whether to approve this ordinance or not is a matter of policy for the city council. The council can continue to have the existing mayoral appointment process, which is what we've had, subject to council ratification, or it could change that process as it's being proposed. That's really a policy concern for the city council to make. The reason I say that is, I think it's important to go back and look at what the California Supreme Court has said about the authority of a charter city. The court recently concluded in a case, under the state constitution, the ordinances of a charter city supersede state law with respect to municipal affairs, but state law is supreme with respect to matters of statewide concern. In this case, there is no state law that addresses the appointment authority for regional boards and commissions to, generally speaking, with regard to the elected mayor of a charter city. The only statute that applies with regard to Sandag is the Public Utility Code. What the Public Utility Code provides is that each city who's a member of Sandag gets one representative selected by the governing body of that city. Now, that language has prompted a lot of confusion over the years, whether the term "selected by" means, does the council have the authority right now to make that change and to appoint themselves, or is it still exclusively the mayor's authority? And what Sandag Legal Council has advised us, me in particular, is that they did not intend to be prescriptive about the appointment process when that Public Utility Code section was drafted. The city can choose whatever process it has for the appointment of its member. My opinion has been that the mayor has the appointment authority under our city code as it exists today because that code specifically references Government Code Section 40605, which provides that the elected mayor of a general law city has that appointment authority, absent another state law to the contrary. So by referencing 40605 in our historic practice of having the mayor make the appointment, it has been my opinion that the mayor has that authority today, notwithstanding the fact that the Public Utility Code specifically provides that the governing body of the city can make the appointment. Therefore, if the council majority wishes to move forward with this, it has been my opinion that you need to amend the city code to provide for the process that you seek. So happy to answer any additional questions.
Thank you. That's exactly how I would have put it. But that's why we have a city attorney. Now, the issue also has come up regarding seniority and majority votes. And as I pointed out at the last meeting, it's interesting, when we have one majority in charge, it's the voice of the people, and when another majority is in charge, it's an attack on democracy. And I will point out that, you know, in the last election, probably the major issue at the time was the labor contracts that were being passed. And I won election based on my position on those contracts, and yet the majority that existed at the time passed a major labor contract less than 24 hours before I was going to be sworn in. Now, they had the legal right to do it. They had the majority. But, you know, they exercised that right and didn't have any compunction whatsoever about going in the face of what the voters themselves had said at the prior election. Also, on the issue of seniority, when other majorities came in, they had no problem whatsoever removing our colleague here, Jack Feller, from positions he'd achieved at Sandeg and the North County Transit District where he had built up considerable authority. Why? Because his views were out of alignment with what the majority was at that time. Well, I believe the mayor's views are out of alignment with what the current majority is on this council, and the city council should have a greater say in having its views felt in the appointment process. And that's why I brought forward this amendment. And, you know, there's accusations that it's personal and it's jealousy and all this other kind of nonsense. I happen to like the mayor personally, and, you know, as the old line in the movie says, "It's not personal, it's business." It's basically what I believe is important to move the agenda forward for the city of Oceanside, as expressed through the voters, through the elections they made for all five of us to be in this body. So I believe this motion's in the best interest of Oceanside, and I'd like to make a motion that we pass the ordinance as drafted by the city attorney, or introduce the ordinance as drafted by the city attorney, and that the second reading of the ordinance take place at the meeting of Wednesday, December 12th, assuming that's approved at the special meeting to follow this meeting, to set up a regular meeting for Wednesday, December 12th.
I'm sorry. Thank you. Councilmember Feller.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I respectfully disagree with our city attorney. First of all, we have a government that has a separately-elected mayor. Since 1888, or thereabouts, because we were established in 1888, we've had a general law, we have been a general law city, with all the protections afforded a general law city. And the protections that have been afforded through the state, the state legislature, have been basically the separation of powers. While we in Oceanside enjoy, or have had, a strong city manager form of government, we still have a separately-elected mayor, which basically means that we have an executive office. Now, we have from day one, through practice, through the courts, through every single way that you can think of, in terms of legally, in terms of state statutes, in terms of interpretation as a law, of the law, the mayor has been the person who brings forward names for the council to consider for appointments. The system of checks and balances is already part of that system, already part of that appointment authority. The mayor brings forward names. If the council does not wish to agree with the mayor, they can vote no. And in fact, the majority, a majority have, through the years, voted no. Over the years, our city, through, either through requests through the mayor or requests from the city manager's office, have gotten opinions from the city, from the state Attorney General's office about the mayor's appointment authority. And time after time, the mayor's power to appoint has been upheld every single time, has been recognized. So the question is, well, what happened when we decided, when Councilmember Feller brought forward a charter resolution that was written by the BIA and the ABC? All that really did, and that was all done within one reading, one meeting, no public process, no review by the city attorney, city manager, by the council, nothing. No public process at all, no citizens committee. What they did was basically jam through, in one meeting, language that basically just added anti-labor provisions, anti-labor provisions. That's all they were really interested in. And these provisions have since been rendered moot by either the state legislature or the courts. It left intact all the protections of a general law city, all the protections, including the separation of powers. I believe that if we interpret our constitution, which is basically what it is, charter, rules, laws, this is our constitution, leaving out the protections of the separation of powers, then I believe the charter is effective. We do live in a democracy. If this was such a big issue, then it should have been brought forward during the recent election. Well, guess what it was? For about a year and a half, we've had a competition between Mr. Kern and our mayor, with Mr. Kern stating over and over again that he did not believe Jim Wood was a leader. The public had a right and had the opportunity to address this very, very issue. Who should lead the city of Oceanside as the mayor? Who should have those mayoral powers of appointment? The public, the voters spoke on a two-to-one with a 54% voting majority. Mayor Jim Wood won an overwhelming approval by the voters of Oceanside with a 77 or something, 74% voter turnout. Was it 70?
77%.
High voter turnout, very low voter turnout for the charter, because that was a, you know, June election. So we know who our citizens want to be the leader and to be able to make these appointments. Leadership, Jim's leadership was attacked over and over and over again. Last night, I saw a petition on Facebook, and it went practically viral. Now, I don't know how many, how many signatures it finally got, Max, how many?
A few hundred. I haven't checked out the report.
Okay. In just a very, very short period of time, a petition on Facebook has gotten several hundred signatures requesting that the mayor retain his powers, requesting that this council not vote yes on this introduction, on this ordinance. Public opinion is against this. The voters are against this. All that's happening here today is really sour grapes. There was a fair vote. There was a fair fight November 6th. And because Mr. Kern lost, they want to change the rules. That's all that's happening here. Let me tell you about Sandeg, because apparently, and I know, Jim, you're going to be talking about this too, is you need to have seniority. Mayor Jim Wood has done a phenomenal job for us, for the city of Oceanside. He has gotten millions and millions of dollars for the city of Oceanside. The two projects that these guys want are not regional projects, will never, ever, ever receive any funding. There is now a different Sandeg that is going to be started in January. Guess what? Completely out of step with these two guys. These two guys, or three guys, will not even be able to get any votes, because their philosophies differ wildly, wildly, from Sandeg's. Sandeg, new members are going to be moderates. They're going to be conservative about spending, certainly not going to be willing to spend any money here in Oceanside for projects that are not regional and that are not, and that are highly controversial. So all you're doing here is taking out the one person who can get, continue to get us funding, the one person who can work with people across, across party lines, be they Republican, be they Democrat, be they decline to states. That's all you're doing. You're trying to take out the most popular mayor, the most, one of the most popular people in Sandeg. That's what you're trying to do. And you're trying to do it not with the force of a public vote. You're trying to do it in a very sneaky way, adding special meetings, trying to jam this through. This is not honorable. This is not ethical, and I believe this is illegal, what is happening tonight. I believe the mayor has several legal options here besides asking for an Attorney General's opinion, and I believe that the people have several options as well. This past weekend, I was invited to seven events. I ended up going to five. Everywhere I went, people were upset. They could not even understand why, why a charter could do this. They're very upset about the charter. What do you mean? What do you mean they can do this? We voted for him so that he can be our leader. Every single person said that. 54%. 54%. That's a supermajority. Why is it that time and time again, we refuse to listen to the public? Why is it that time and time again, we leave the public out? I don't understand this council that chooses to focus on negative actions, divisive actions, when there are so many positive things that we need to do in this city to get jobs, to get responsible development, to fix our roads, to fix our potholes, to fix our neighborhoods? Why is it that instead of doing all of those things, we're going to focus for the next year, two years, on fixing this problem that they're just going to create right now? Why are we going to battle for the next, possibly up to two years, starting now, instead of focusing on development, positive development of our city? There are so many projects at stake, so many projects at stake. $100 million mitigation money, we're going to lose. We're going to lose because of this tonight. One of us will, goodness, not going to get fixed. The I-5 widening is probably not going to happen, and it's going to be because of this action right here, tonight. You know, you can, you can talk and talk till you're blue in the face, and these guys don't understand, they don't hear. All they, all they have here is, you know, that they just have to be the ones. They want to do this because they can, and that's it. They don't care about Oceanside. They don't care one diddy squat about Oceanside and our kids and our future. It is so, so, so sad to see what's happening tonight. But I know that Jim, Jim will continue to fight for Oceanside, whatever position he's in, because people listen to him. He, other elected officials in this county listen to this man. They will not be listening to these other guys, again, because they're just so out It is really, really sad day to day. I mean, not even, not even waiting until having us all sworn in did this come in. I mean, this is like, you know, Grinch or what's that other guy? Bah Humbug, who doesn't care about anybody but their personal, personal sense of values. No. Feller wants to get paid to be able to go to a meeting. You know, you know, Felley, I don't know what he wants, except the destruction of Oceanside. He doesn't want any parks. He doesn't want any senior centers. He doesn't want any, any of our resource centers to be open. He doesn't even want the library. You know, all of these things is what, this is, this is his philosophy. The voters of Oceanside will not stand for that, will not stand for that. It is fruitless to ask these guys to say, "Vote no." I know that. But I want the public to know, I want the public to know what's happening tonight. This is a critical thing. Taking the power, stripping the mayor of his powers of appointment, you know, it's, it's ugly. It's, 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 it's noxious. It's degrading. It's every single negative thing you can think of, and this is what the rest of the county thinks about us. Changing, putting these guys on is not going to change a darn thing, not a darn thing, except giving us a bad name over and over and over again, over and over and over again. These guys were already on Sandeg. They were already on, you know, committees. And now they want to get, you know, be taken off committees, I guess, by their action tonight. So, now, I guess there's nothing else to say. This is, this is the most disgusting thing that I have seen done to an elected official well-loved by the citizens of Oceanside. I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, that you have to deal with this.
Thank you. Councilmember Feller.
Thank you. That's quite a bit of drama. I, I want to talk a little bit about loss of tenure that former council member Lowry spoke about. In 1991, Melba Bishop, Don Rodi, and Nancy York took the mayor off the city, off of Sandeg when he was to be the chairman of Sandeg. So I guess the idea is not unprecedented. I'm pretty sure that would have meant a lot for the city of Oceanside had Larry Bagley been the chair of Sandeg for a couple of years. In 96 or 97, Terry Johnson, Carol McCauley, and Betty Harding took then-mayor Dick Lyon off of Sandeg as he was to become the chair of the Transportation Commission. Instead, that went to Joe Collegian, and he built everything that was allowed to bring forward transportation dollars to Solana Beach, and they've done a great job down there. I think that could have been pretty good for Oceanside, too. In June of 2019... In, um, June of 2005, um, I said, uh, there are benefits to seniority or longevity, but that's if, in fact, you are working as a, a member of the, the board down there, and working on the committees that come with the, the territory of being the mayor. The mayor has not worked on any committees at Sand Egg. He's delegated all that authority to cities like Del Mar and Solana Beach. It, at the time, they removed me from, uh, Sand Egg, I was on the executive committee. I had just filled a spot that Ramona Fenella had, uh, vacated after being on Sand Egg, uh, for a lot of years. So I was on the executive committee, and, uh, as far as, uh, Transit District, I was the chairman of the Transit District. So, um, we dropped to the bottom in all of those, um, those, um, boards. But, the, the difference was that we had voices on transportation. Every transportation meeting, we had, uh, two voices, and every Sand Egg meeting, we had at least two voices. Um, and, and that makes a difference when you're, uh, the chair of one committee, and even the alternate, uh, being allowed to go down, uh, and participate in those, uh, commissions, and, in the, uh, uh, Sand Egg, and the committees that go along with that. And we're not even talking about the Water Authority yet, um, we, we're losing a lot of ground there, too. In 2005, uh, Councilmember Chavez, uh, said he, he would go along with, uh, the, um, appointments, and, uh, at that point, I gave up trying to push for, for the, the spot. But what happened immediately after that appointment schedule, it became, uh, uh, the mayor and, uh, Councilmember Sanchez were appointed as, uh, primary and alternate at Sand Egg, and, uh, Councilmember Mackin was, uh, alternate at, or primary, I think, at, uh, over at, uh, the, uh, NCTD, and the mayor was, uh, alternate there. But, um, immediately after we made these appointments, they put in place that you could not vote for yourself if you were to receive a stipend. Um, and that remained in place till this past March. So, if that had been in place all these years, probably the mayor wouldn't have been on Sand Egg all of these years. This, um, it brings me to a couple of compli, a, a couple of statements that the mayor made, uh, at the December 2005 meeting, when he appointed, um, Mackin, Sanchez, and Wood. Mackin was the primary at, uh, Sand Egg. Sanchez was the first alternate, and Wood was the third, or second alternate in it, at, uh, uh, over at Transit District, it was, uh, uh, Mackin and Wood. But, his statement then was, he thinks things like Sand Egg need to be moved around so everyone gets a fair chance at, at them. He even put himself as second, uh, alternate there. So he, he actually believes that this should be passed around. You know, frankly, I don't. I think, if you can get in the rotation, you, um, you do have that tenure that, um, is so important, uh, in, in many facets of our, our government. And I think, the, the, the problem was, at that point, uh, in, he, he had missed, uh, a couple of meetings, and nobody showed up to represent us at all during, between June and December of that year. So, in this case, I think, I mean, his statement says he'd like to move it around, uh, and I, um, I agree. So, I'm going to, uh, support this, um, because I, I think the precedent was set. I mean, Rodi, and York, and Melba Bishop took him right out of, took Larry Bagley right out of the chairmanship at Sand Egg. And the three did that to Mayor Lyon in, in the 90s, right out of the Transportation Chair. Um, and, and we lost out. The mayor is not on any committees at Sand Egg, other than he's the primary, uh, at the policy, the board, in the Policy Board, uh, meetings. And, and most of the time, he is, uh, attending, and occasionally, one of us will go down and, uh, fill in for him. So, um, I did, I mean, now, that's, I, I, I have other comments about things that we're accused of, and, but this is just about this issue tonight. So, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, and the reason why I say thank you for being here and watching on TV, I apologize, and sometimes we have issues that kind of stand out in Oceanside, uh, and that you have to listen to our long speeches. We get three minutes, but we go on and on and on, and I understand it, so I do apologize, everybody here and on TV. It goes long as born, it's important. I've been, most of my stuff has been covered by speakers, or, or Councilmember Sanchez, who's also an attorney, and she is very sharp, she's been involved in a lot of things. I think I will say this to everybody in the audience, or not. First off, uh, I think these actions that are taking place for this vote hurts me, and it seems to be personal, after the election. Some of the things that were said, like I say, nobody's going to agree to, or they may or may not like it. What it comes down to is, I truly believe that citizens get to vote and they speak. If you have an election like this, and you get an overwhelming win, as the mayor, I'm assuming those powers would stay with you. Before I even got sworn back in, they've already decided to change my powers. That does concern me, but the only thing is, it hurts me. I can live with that, if I'm not at any of these committee commissions, I won't mind, in a sense that, for the people out there, I think I do a good job representing them. I am the senior mayor in North San Diego County, that does have influence, there's no doubt about it. Mr. Feller is right, and so are the other ones. Did we remove people in the past? Yes. Each one of those mayors have the ability to fight it or do something about it, and if they decided not to, that's their choice. In my situation, I'm not fighting it for me. You can hurt me, I can get off of any of these committees and commissions, I'll live with it. I'll still try to represent the citizens of Oceanside. There's a couple of things I don't think they understand, or maybe people in the audience don't understand, that, uh, I'm trying to fight this for a couple of reasons, and I want to tell you what those are. Number one, it's been a longstanding practice that the mayor does this for 125 years in Oceanside. And so with that, I think that's something, I, I'm standing up for the past, present, and future mayors of Oceanside, not just for me, but the future mayors of Oceanside, that they can do this. It's something that's been done forever and ever in our city. The Attorney General of the State of California, of Republicans, said that the mayor had the rights to do this. And what I'm fighting here is that, if I don't get on these committees and commissions, that's the choice of the council, I really, truly believe that, and they can remove me. On the other hand, not under the laws that sits now. They're changing the law because of the Charter City Amendment, trying to put it through. Vote now, they're also putting a special election, which you'll vote on later tonight, they haven't done on the 12th, and increase that time so they can have their ability to remove me, or put people on Sand Egg. Uh, that's certainly their case, I don't agree how they're doing it. Some of you say yes, some no, whatever. I'm just saying, I'll live with it, it doesn't really make me lose any sleep. I wasn't going to run this time. I wasn't going to run for mayor this time. The reason I ran is that, uh, most of the seniors, most of the veterans all around the community were very upset about the rent control issue, and Proposition E and F. They asked me to stay, they did not want Mr. Kern to be the mayor. So I said I would run one more time, and I gave it a try. I won by overwhelming numbers. Fine, I'm here in the office, now boring these people to death for what I did, or what I can do. Here's the situation, I want to protect the mayor's right to do this. I don't agree, just like Esther Sanchez indicated, that I'm not sure that the agreement of the mayor, excuse me, the attorney for the city of Oceanside, is something I agree with. So I said at the last meeting that I want a legal representation, that's all. Legal representation, because I can't go to my city attorney, it's conflict of interest. You know, he's giving an ordinance through for the voting majority, how can I go to him? I wanted to be represented on legal issues. And then recently, as much as earlier today, I said, "Well, I don't want to charge the city or cost the city money just to represent me on this issue, but I'm representing the rest of the mayors and the future mayors on it." So what I said is, let's go through, give an attorney, Attorney General opinion on this again, and see what they have to say, and make a final decision back to us. No charge to the city, recognition, Attorney General should review it, the past, the future, and make a decision which would be something that we can look at and say, "Why or why not?" Uh, if not that, the only alternative is trying to get legal opinion from somebody else, and that's something I'll try to bring back. I'm not going to roll over and die on this, not because I'm stubborn, it's just I think I'm representing two things, past, present, and future mayors. Secondly, the vote of the citizens of Oceanside. When you win by landslide, as I call it, and people come right away to try to change that power, I think it's wrong. And I'm here to represent the voters of Oceanside who did vote. And that's what I want. Although I want a little kind of a tweak, tweak, and I don't want to really make it as personal an issue, but I won by a large portion over Councilman Kern. The other people that ran for council seats, not mayor council seats, Esther Sanchez, they in the course of, they lost, got more votes than Mr. Kern. If he had ran for council seat, he would have been fourth. So what I'm saying is, the people have spoken around about, wait, I know somebody out there that the other tag's been with me, but what I'm saying is, I think this is not necessarily the right thing to do. Uh, I think this is all about the ways and how they handle things, and how they want to use their power. Councilman Sanchez also mentioned something that I think is very accurate. I didn't keep money coming up to North Oceanside or North San Diego County from Sand Egg. Eighteen cities vote on it, all the cities vote on it, they're power votes, I've said this once before. San Diego gets 25 power votes. The county of San Diego gets 25 power votes. I'm the largest city in North San Diego, and I only get five. It's an uphill battle to beat some of the power brokers here and a power vote. With that, I agree, the face of Sand Egg is going to change drastically, and the reason I say that, I see some of the people out here in the audience notice that, in San Diego County, most of the Democrats won everything in the county. And they'll be the people sitting on Sand Egg as voters. And that's what I'm saying, it'll be a different person. I get along with all those people, that's fine. If I don't sit on Sand Egg, ladies and gentlemen, I'm sorry for your sake. They can't run any money here quicker than us, we get a 2030 and 2050 plan for transportation, that's what's up for the future, voted on by 18 cities, including power votes. If you think you can go down there, any one of these guys, and get millions of dollars from some other city that's already been voted on for 2030, 2050 plan, you're speculating wrong. The other thing, if you go down and try to change Sand Egg's mind on RDO at 78, or the Melrose Extension, you will get no support whatsoever, those are dead issues, there's no money, they're always set aside. When the money got pulled away from Oceanside, or the North County, up here for a large amount of money, and it went south, none of us wanted that, but it was second in order when we backed off, that automatically went to second tier, where it was supposed to go voted on by all of us in Sand Egg. What we lost that for is, we didn't have anything shovel ready, and the Blaine Bristol again, this is the biggest issue up here in Oceanside, that the environmentalists will protect, we cannot do the intersection of I-5 and 78, that intersection, until there's been an environmental impact report done by Fish and Game. They haven't done it. So there's no money, we can't do anything until it's approved for, uh, an environmental impact report. The only way that's going to happen is, our coastal commission, Esther Sanchez, that with me and Charles Bad Mayor, we talked Sand Egg into doing the environmental impact report instead of Fish and Game, to get it done, and be able to have shovel ready for them to do it, and then we get up to Oceanside, moving right in the freeway and a flyover at 78 and I-5. So there's more to it. We wouldn't get that without the coastal commission representative dealing with us. She's in the powerful position to deal with the environmentalists regarding the Blaine Bristol Legume. I don't want to hinder that stuff, so we see there's a possibility of not getting some of that stuff. We're talking large money. As you smile and talk about this young lady from the Southern Party, I'm assuming you know more than the rest of us, too. So I know that that's going to not change your mind, but what we're talking about is facts. With that being said, I'm not going to bore you too much anymore, but I'll tell you this, all I wanted around this is a review by the Attorney General to get an opinion, or legal representation from a lawyer that's not going to be on their side, to give me my opinion. We had a lawyer speak tonight, and a lawyer speak here, and they say they don't agree. Lawyers never do, but the person at the top is the Attorney General of the State of California. Nice to ask them if they think the same thing. So I'm going to say, "Thank you for your time, I'm sure the vote will go forward, I'll live with that," but I have to say, I think it hinders the citizens of Oceanside that voted for the mayor, put me in office by a landslide, it's a slap in the face. And I think it's pretty embarrassing for people like Mr. Kern, Mr. Feller, Mr. Feline, that they brought this up. I'll live with that, but it also shows me why I didn't put him on some of their committees and commissions. For Sand Egg, it appears that I can't trust them. Thank you very much. And with that, let's please vote.
This is the introduction of an ordinance of the city of Oceanside, admitting Chapter Two, Section 2.1.64, Subdivision G, of the Oceanside City Code, modifying the appointment process for regional boards and commissions.
Thank you, please vote.
Motion approved, three to two, wouldn't Sanchez know?
I've got a couple more items, I want to talk to the council, we have a special item of the vote, can we do that last two items, some do that first, and we won't have to do it anyhow. Madam Clerk, excuse me, City Attorney, number 13, please.
This is adoption of an ordinance of the city council of the city of Oceanside, admitting this Oceanside traffic code to establish parking privileges for vehicles of veterans displaying special license plates.
Move adoption.
Any people on this, on public? Uh, please vote.
Motion approved, I vote.
Thank you, Mr. City Attorney, number 14, please. Was there a speaker on 14, I'm sorry?
There is a speaker on 14.
Could we hear that first, then?
Yeah, Jimmy, minute.
Mayor, councilmembers, Jimmy Nutt, 127, Sherri Lanning. Just following up from, uh, last week with this item that came before you, staff did take and put the map online, and I want to compliment staff on that. And, uh, the second thing is, I had a question that is unresolved, is that the citizen does see a tower that is not mentioned on the map, uh, who should they contact and, uh, for consideration of inclusion? Thank you.
Thank you. Any others, ma'am, please?
Yeah.
Thank you very much, with that, uh...
This is the adoption of an ordinance of the city council of the city of Oceanside for Zone Amendment ZA 10, dash 1, Revision 2, modifying Article 39 of the Oceanside Zoning Ordinance Regarding Wireless Communication Facilities.
Move adoption.
Second.
Second.
Do we have an answer for Mr.?
They can contact the planning department.
Thank you very much, with that, please vote.
Motion approved, I vote.
Thank you very much, uh, one other thing, uh, Madam Clerk, would you take this item, which is a special meeting notice? And, uh, I don't think we have to go up to pledge and everything else, do we, here? After adjourn this meeting, we come back to this one, okay? Thank you very much. First, before I adjourn this meeting, uh, yeah, I better not, because we might build on this next thing, date-wise, adjourn two.
For Eddie Lacy?
No, no, we can do that now or after. Let's do it after the next one, because we'll still be here. Thank you. What I was going to say, I will have adjourned this meeting, and thank you, ladies and gentlemen, I'll go ahead and open the meeting, for, uh...
Actually, I think it should have been a regular meeting, because this is a special meeting.
You're right, you're right, I see. I hate to do this, because folks are here waiting in the audience. We want to adjourn this meeting in memory of a particular person here... Will you want to adjourn this meeting in memory of a particular person here in town? Esther, if you will highlight it again, we'll give a moment of silence for this gentleman. I'll adjourn this meeting and open the new meeting that's brought by the other three gentlemen. Thank you very much. Ladies and gentlemen, if you don't mind, I appreciate it, could you stand for a moment? A moment. Do remember, a gentleman in Dadeville, opposite city, would you please, Esther?
Eddie Lacy. Eddie Lacy.
Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen, and I apologize, and I thank you for your time. I gotta say, I've never seen one of these, and staff haven't either, which is a meeting called by Mr. Feller, Mr. Feline, and Mr. Kern, overriding the Mayor's choice to bring up meetings, so they're doing that tonight. With that, it's like any other meeting, I'll go ahead and open that, and roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Mayor Wood.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Feller.
Here.
Councilmember Sanchez.
Here.
Councilmember Kern.
Here.
Councilmember Feline.
Thank you. Right, a roll call, it's consent item, and Madam Clerk, would you please?
The item is Amendment to the Twenty-Two Schedule of Dates and Times for the Regular Joint Meetings of the City Council, Small Craft Harbor District Board, Community Development Commission, and Oceanside Public Findings and Authority, adding Wednesday, December twelfth, two thousand and twelve, at four P.M., to the regular meeting schedule.
Ladies and gentlemen, who wants to take a lead? It's your item. I'll tell you the subject. I'm sorry, thank you very much. Mr. Feline, it's yours.
Thank you, Mayor. The issue came up here, and it's a technical issue, and as you may recall, when we had our meeting on the twenty-eighth, because Councilman Kern was not going to be here for the meeting on December nineteenth, we were discussing having a special meeting for the second hearing of the ordinance that we just approved at the first reading, and City Attorney at that time felt the second reading could take place at a special meeting. And reviewing his documentation, he came to the conclusion that he could not, we could not have a reading, second reading, or I guess any reading, at a special meeting, but we could have a special meeting to call a regular meeting, and amend the notice. So yeah, it's sort of jumping through one hoop, we have to jump through two hoops. So this is to meet the technical requirements in order to have the twenty-four hour notice for the special meeting, which was called yesterday, so we could have a seventy-two hour notice to call a regular meeting. So this is basically a different road to the same destination, to have a meeting next week to have the second reading of the ordinance. So I'd like to move that we approve item one, to have a regular meeting on Wednesday, December twelfth, two thousand and twelve, at four P.M., and include, as an agenda item, the second reading of the ordinance we just approved, revising appointment powers to regional boards and commissions.
Thank you, I appreciate your second, maybe have a second on that? Any public on this, ma'am?
There's no public.
Thank you. Back to the City Council, any comments? Councilmember Sanchez.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I object to this. A normal way of doing this, and I've never known this to happen, ever, where you call a special meeting, this is really gonna be another special meeting. And that's because one of our councilmembers can't be here on a specific date, but certainly, everyone can be here on the meeting after that, which is the second. That's an anticipation of a two and two vote. That's all you're doing here, is you're trying to fix this. And I mean, that's fix in a negative fix, a negative way. So I don't know why you can't just wait until we're all here on the second of January. You know, we've known the calendar for quite some time, about this time of the year, we've known it. So we've known it for at least twelve months, and, you know, people have vacations during December, we know that. I just don't understand why this came up in December, at a holiday time, in the first place, and then now to try to manipulate the dates to create a special meeting so that this can happen, is, it's just, you know, I've never heard of this happening. This just feels wrong. So I'm gonna oppose this, and I hope that you prefer to go something that is much more above board, transparent, good government, and just go ahead, if you're not gonna get the vote on the nineteenth, then go ahead and continue the meeting to the second. That's what usually happens when you don't agree, is that if you got a two-two vote, because one person is absent, it automatically goes to the next, to the next regularly scheduled meeting. So why can't we just do that? It seems to me that we are creating a special meeting to address a special situation for a councilmember who wants to go on vacation, not be here for your second reading.
I'm gonna say something that's a different line is, I wasn't asked if this is a good date. Nobody granted by me. I have a potential conflict if it goes a little bit more than an hour. I have, I said I'd be with the Commandant General, all the generals on Camp Ellen's party, and the Mayor represents on Camp Ellen, so it's a tough day for me, but I'll try to make myself available anyway, I can to accommodate anything, but like I say, no one asked if it's a good day for Esther and myself or whatever, and it's not a good day for me. And again, the nineteenth wasn't a good day for you, Mr. Kern, so it's one of those concepts, and it's gonna pass anyhow, so that's fine, but I wish I'd got a little bit of feedback about, all of us, it's a good day for all of us. That's all I have to say. Thank you. Mr. Feline, please.
Uh, thank you.
You got a motion already, ma'am?
I have the motion. But I just, I wanna say then, Mr. Mayor, that if I owe you an apology, I will extend it, 'cause I thought I had instructed my aide to contact you and to make sure if that date was acceptable. As you recall from last meeting, Councilwoman Sanchez ruled herself out and publicly stated she wasn't interested in attending when we were attempting to accommodate her schedule. Now, I'd ask the City Attorney, now, the time for that date isn't important to me, and would we be allowed to change the time of the meeting as part of the motion, and, or are we stuck with this specific time?
You can change the timing.
Okay, or does anyone object to having the meeting earlier, two o'clock, or does that work for you? And does that help, Mr. Mayor?
My meeting I have is later, it's like five o'clock, but anything before that would help me, and I don't know about anybody else. That's all it is, is a time machine.
To work for you, Jack?
Go for two o'clock, give you time to put on the tux or whatever.
Thank you. So you amended and...
I amended a motion to, everything the same, except changing the time from four o'clock to two o'clock.
Thank you. Let's vote. And the City Manager wanted to speak.
I did not hear a second to the motion. Who's speaking? You do?
Motion approved, three to two. Wouldn Sanchez, no.
Do we have a public comment again, ma'am? And do we have...
No, that's fine.
Honorable Mayor, Councilmembers, as a result of that vote, just so you know, we will not have any staff items on that agenda, we have ours planned for the nineteenth. Just so you know, typically, we would require any councilmember items to be submitted by ten o'clock the week before that meeting. We would extend that until ten o'clock tomorrow morning, in the event that you have any councilmember items that you'd like to add to that agenda.
No public, again, on this new meeting?
No public.
Thank you. With that, I'll adjourn this meeting to Wednesday, December the twelfth, at two P.M. Thank you. Good night, ladies and gentlemen, be safe. Happy holidays.